... is the key to my success. Finding where to go around this mess. People come and people go like wind and rain, like wind and rain. Say, it's okay that you scar me, they already want me. Feelings get hurt, hurt. It's okay that you scar me, they already want me. Feelings get hurt, hurt. Take a place good out of town. Time for business, can't mess around. But then I see all the city lights and I wish you were here. I wish you were here.
Evidence and understanding. As the Magi sought you, let them be examples to us as they were seekers of truth and wisdom. We know that with God, all things are possible. Give us the strength and wisdom to be your servants first and the leadership necessary to be good stewards of the resources you have provided us in our community. This is a time of great opportunity, challenge, and building of relationships with our community, our parents, our students, our teachers, our staff, and our new board. We ask this in your name, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can be seated, please. A few opening comments before we begin the meeting that I'd like to provide. First of all, on behalf of the school district and the educational community, I'd like to again welcome all of our new school board members along with our returning board members to Lafayette Parish Educational Community. Thank you for making this commitment to join our tradition-rich educational community. We look forward to working with you as we continue to progress towards the ultimate goal of having all of our students college and career ready. We also want to welcome all of the family members that took time out of their busy schedule to be here today with us. Second, on Monday, January 5th, we held a district-wide in-service for teachers and other staff members. As I've visited workshops throughout the district, it made me truly proud to consistently see the dedication and involvement of our teachers and other participants. And I definitely want to send out a special thanks to all of our staff members that planned and presented such quality professional development activities. And I'm sure that these activities will pay off for our instructional staff in the classroom. On a really good note, yesterday, along with Ms. Billado and several media members, and I want to thank them for being there, we had the opportunity to honor our Teachers of the Year at the school site. They did not know we were coming and they did not know that they were chosen. They were so excited and appreciative of the award and very, very humble. Even more impressive to me was the reaction of their peers and their students as we presented them as winners. And if you happen to see some of the TV exposure, the students were just so excited to see their teachers as winners. And each teacher made sure that the students knew that they were part of the award. So that was really great. The winners included in high school Catherine Cook at Como High School. Our middle school Teacher of the Year was Holly Como at Karen Crow Middle School. And our elementary Teacher of the Year was Bridget Beggno at J. Wallace James. We will be making some formal presentations at a later time at future board meeting, not only for them but for all of our Teachers of the Year. So that's always a very special board meeting. Thanks to the school principals for their leadership and working with those teachers. We also honored our Principals of the Year. We brought them some candy right after the holidays. We already recognized them, but we did want to again go by because it's so important when you talk about a great school, you talk about great leadership, and we have such outstanding principals. So we did that. Congratulations to all of them. Tomorrow will be one of the coldest temperatures of the year, probably the year. Fortunately, no precipitation has been identified with the association of this system. Mr. Boardlaw, our Director of Planning and Facilities, along with his staff, along with the custodians and principals, have been preparing our schools this week for the cold weather, and we should be ready to go tomorrow. So a special thanks to all of those individuals. So thank you for allowing me to give those few announcements. At this time, I'm going to call on our Clerk of Court, Mr. Louis Perret, and he is going to do the swearing-in ceremonies for our new board members. Mr. Perret?
I do. I do. I wish you all... I'll call you up one more time. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? Congratulations. You ready? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations.
All right, you ready? You're happy for somebody on your phone? Come stand right here, face me. You're gonna stand right here and right here. Just come in so y'all can get at the pitch. All right. They put your left hand on the Bible, left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution... Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. Dr. Timmy Chassault had a previous engagement and came by my office earlier today and was sworn in. So we'll go ahead. Britt, you have a family member? Lotulay clan, y'all did all the work. Now's your time. Would you like to hold the Bible? You can stand right here and face me. Hands flat out, just like this. You want to stand off here? You can step up. Come on. Come on. Stand right up here. You want to stand on this side right here? She want to be by here? Just like this. All right, Britt, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. By the way, all the paperwork has already been signed. Each member's signed five times and we have all of that taken care of. You want to hold the Bible? You can stand right here and face me. You have to hold it up so he can put his hands on it, okay? You want to stand right here? You can step up, one if you want to step up. Okay, you got it? All right. When you're wrapping up, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I do. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member for Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I will. Congratulations. You ready? You got family members, a whole pair? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States[1032.79]
District one. District two. District three. District four. District five. District six. District seven. District eight. District nine.
Yes.
Eight for, none against.
Ms. Angel, congratulations, Board President. You can take your seat and you gavel. As Ms. Angel is moving to her seat, just a reminder to the board members, I know it'll get, you'll have to get used to it, but remember your microphone that when you speak so that we can pick it up on AOC to please press the button, and then make sure you turn it off afterwards, and please do that.
Thank you very much, and thank you, my fellow board members, and I intend to do my very best so that we can all move forward in a orderly fashion and do what's best for our system, and most important, our students. With that, I would open the floor for nominations, and I would take personal privilege by nominating Dawn Morris for Vice President.
I'll second that.
Second, sir?
Me. I'm sorry, we have a second, any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
Motion to second nomination be closed, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried, thank you very much. We'll go back to the original election of Vice President, Dawn Morris. I would accept the motion that we elect Dawn Morris by acclamation.
So moved.
Is that a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried, thank you very much. Congratulations, Dawn. Can change places with him. I think it'll mean you'll have to log out and log back in. Correct me if I'm wrong, but henceforth we'll vote on the computer, Melva.
Ms. Angel.
Yes, yes.
Next, we would want to take the group picture. We want to take the group picture, so it'll just take a couple of minutes from the setup, and we'll take the picture.
Moving along, we have an agenda item number six, and the floor will accept any motions, or if we have any to add anything to the agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda you want to add at this time? All right, hearing none, then we will accept the motion approving the agenda as submitted. Motion by Ms. Morris.
I'll second.
Second by Eric. Well, I think from now on, we'll vote on the computer. Okay. We're ready to vote, Melva.
Eight for, none against.
Okay, our next item is the sales tax collection report for November of 14.
President Angel, members of the board, Superintendent Lejeune, Bob Simpson, Director of Sales Tax, I'm here to present the collection report. This is for the month of November, month that ended November 30th, 2014, and that happens to be the October sales. This is five months into our current fiscal year. The collections at November for the three Lafayette Parish Sales Tax School Board levies increased a combined 5.8% over the November of 2013, the prior year. The increase equaled $403,000 for this 1965 tax, and $156,000 each for the 1988 and 2002 sales taxes. If you look at the report, you can see the budget comparison, which is on page six. At five months, the budget is approximately 6%, the collections, excuse me, are approximately 6% over the budget. And if there's any other questions about the report, I know you're new members, you may not be familiar with everything that's in there, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
If there are no questions, we entertain a motion to accept the report.
I'll have a motion to accept the report.
Mary in Elroy. Any discussion? Any discussion from the public on this item? Okay, Melva.
Yes, sir.
Eight for, none against.
All right, our next item is the personnel changes for January, through January 7th, Ms. Lininger and Ms. Stipido.
I'm sorry, Mr. Angel. Information report. The first item is status report.
Oh, I stand corrected. Status report for the construction fund, 212 Limited Bond Tax Fund.
Good evening, members of the board. Kyle Bordlon, Director of Planning and Facilities, welcome. In your board attachments, there's a status report on the construction fund 2012 Limited Tax Bond. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those at this time. One thing I would like to point out is on the GT Linden Elementary project, we did successfully move out of all of the portable buildings over the holiday break, and we are now into the new permanent buildings. And during the month of January, we'll be working on removing those portable buildings off of that campus, so we can begin construction on the last permanent classroom building on that campus and the faculty parking lot. So if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And now we'll take the personnel changes, January 7th, 2015.
President Angel, Mr. Lejeune, and honorable board members. We have the personnel changes. We do have an administrator that we'd like to introduce, that's recently been hired, and so if I take that pleasure to do that, and then if there are any questions afterwards, I'd be happy to field any of them that you'd like to make. It's a great honor to introduce Nicholas Thomas as the principal at Caron Crow Heights Elementary. Mr. Thomas earned a Bachelor of Science and Master of Education degree from Southern University. He has served as an agriculture science, environmental science, physical science, and history teacher in the St. Landry Parish School System, in the Evangeline Parish School System. He has also served as an assistant principal and principal at Ernest Galais. Mr. Thomas thought he was going to retire, but he missed us so much, he decided to rescind it before he did anything else and has come back to us. So I'd like, this is my pleasure to congratulate him and bring him forward and say hello.
Thank you, Mr. Lininger. I will be very brief, I've been on this role before. I want to first say Happy New Year to every one of you. I want to say congratulations to the new board, also to Superintendent Lejeune. And I want to first give thanks to God. It is him that led me, has led me down this path. And I also want to thank my family who could not be here on tonight, my wonderful four children and my beautiful wife, and I wish they could have been here, but let them know I said how much I love them. And I took the opportunity to do that. And I look forward to working with the Caron Crow community, and I'm just thankful for the trust that the staff has put in me. I've served in Lafayette Parish prior to this time, and I look forward to doing so for a longer period of time, Mr. Lininger. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity once again.
Any questions by anyone on the board about the personnel changes?
Jackson.
Of the, does that look like eight employees that were exiting? Do we have exit interviews with those employees?
We receive, we receive a resignation statement from them about the reasons that they resign, and we report that to the state. We are currently working on something that may help us avoid exit interviews, which would be finding out well before they decide to leave us, because when someone leaves and gives their resignation, they've resigned before that in their head. And we are working on that as a goal for this year to drill down further into the reasons why people are leaving.
Do we need a ratification, do we need a ratification of those personnel changes, Ms. Lininger?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have introduction items. Acting Page Chief Operations Officer. Well, if there's no discussion, we'll move that to action for next time unless we do so in a minute.
Unless, unless we have some questions, I would like to just maybe briefly give an explanation of that if I could, Mr. President. That would be okay? Just a couple of comments?
This is my three-minute pink card.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yes, sir, I just want to go briefly over this with the, with the board. You know, over the past 22 years or so that I went back and looked at some of the organizational plans for facilities, maintenance, and custodians, it seems like with every superintendent, there seems to be a little tweaking of the organization for, for this particular part. And I think it will be important for us, as you begin, as new board members, to develop a new organizational plan that will give us the best opportunity for efficiency with all of these departments. We are currently reviewing some organizational charts from other districts of comparable size, and hope to have a recommendation to bring to the board at a later date. In the current organizational chart, we have three identified supervisory positions. We have the Director of Planning and Facilities, which is currently held by Mr. Kyle Bordlon. We had a Director of Maintenance, and that person was in place until they retired and was not filled. And then we had a Special Assistant to the Superintendent in charge of grounds, maintenance, and facilities, and this position was not funded by the board. In the, in one of our past organization plans, I was trying to do some research, there was an approved position for what was titled, and it's still on the books, as a Chief Operations Officer. And this has supervisory responsibilities pertinent to all three of those areas. And based on his 18 years of experience working in the district, and he's had some experience working with all three of these areas, I'm recommending that Mr. Kyle Bordlon serve the district as Acting Chief Operations Officer, reporting directly to the superintendent. I know the job description says deputy, but we don't, do not have a deputy superintendent, and all three of the other positions in the organizational report direct, directly to the superintendent, and until such time that a new organizational plan is approved. I know that this would be a very challenging responsibility for any single person, but we are fortunate that we have so many quality staff members in these departments that would be reporting to Mr. Bordlon. In terms of effectiveness, I'm just going to use this as an example, if we would fund the position of Director of Maintenance, which we have in the organizational chart, and we would fund the position of Special Assistant to the Superintendent, if we would do those two things, for example, it would basically cause the district a little over $600 a day to do that. If we only funded the Director of Maintenance and not the Special Assistant, it would still be about $307 a day on average. But by utilizing this one position, the cost to the district would be about $36, would be $36.12 a day. So I was really looking for an efficient way for us to maintain effectiveness and efficiency, and this is why I'm recommending that to the, to the board.
Any other comments? Yes, Eric.
Mr. Lejeune. This daily amount, is this a stipend, or is this an increase in salary? How is this going to be allocated?
It would actually be an increase in salary. Mr. Bordlon is currently on a pay grade nine, which is in our pay grade structure on the administrative scale, and the Chief Operation Officer is a pay grade 11. So it would be, it would be, it would be a raise in terms, but it would not have to continue once, once we reorganize, and I don't know yet if we can have a Chief Operation Officer, Director of Maintenance, but it would not continue as part of his, his permanent salary.
And that was the main reason for my question. So once someone is placed in that position, Chief Operation Officer, or whatever their position is named, how is the daily amount going to discontinue? Is it automatic, or is it?
Right, this is just an acting position. I hope I'm saying that right, Mr. Bruce, but it's an acting position, so he'll be paid until that time that we have a permanent position.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Ms. Lininger? Okay.
Yes, what happens is he'll be placed in an acting position. He already has primary duties in his role in facilities planning. So he will fill out a supplemental form every month that will report the days he's worked, and that number of days worked will then be multiplied by that $36.12. And then in that case, what will happen is when, when whatever reorganization takes place, or whatever the board decides to do with that part of the organization, that supplemental pay will stop, and he would then revert to the pay that he would be earning in the position that he's currently appointed to.
No other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to the job description for the Assistant Director for Sales Tax, Mr. Guidry and/or Mr. Simpson.
Yes, this is a new position that has been included in the sales tax budget. Basically, it fits into our plans to take, take, do some things in the sales tax department in terms of improving the efficiencies. More specifically, we're looking at bringing the accounting, their accounting system onto the one that we're currently using for the rest of the school district. That'll be part of the process. We're looking at a, an auditing, monitoring system where audits will be assigned to our auditors, and the progress of the audits monitored by this individual to determine the number of audits that they're doing, and, and the assessments relating to those audits, so on and so forth. So we feel that there'll be a great benefit to the sales tax department. The funding of it, as I mentioned, is included in the sales tax fund budget, and the way that works is the costs for that particular department are allocated on a pro rata basis based on collections to the various taxing authorities that we collect on behalf of. So at the end of the day, roughly, approximately 48% of the cost of this individual's position would be funded by the school board and the other 52% by the other taxing authorities. Since this is a new position, it requires a job description, of course, and that's why we're presenting it to the board for your consideration.
Any comments or questions? Then, item three would be, do, does anyone wish to, or do we wish to move these two, one or both of these items to action, or you want to wait till next month? The floor is open here.
Mr. President, I move to move both items to action.
I'll second.
Motion, Eric. Dawn, second that we move items one and two under introduction items to the action item, to action items. Any discussion, any questions? Any comments from the membership? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Rodolfo Espinoza, Lafayette Parish Association of Educators. I don't necessarily oppose this, this particular item. I would like, however, for administration to tell us some reasoning why it needs to be moved to action tonight. I think as a rule, the new board should get into the habit, or I think ideally, we want to give the public as much time to comment on, on matters of importance, and that's what the two-week period is all about. That's what introduction, and then two weeks later, action. It gives the public an opportunity to voice their concerns and opinions, and if we get into the habit of immediately going to action, I believe that, that does not fulfill that, that due diligence of allowing public comment. So although I'm not opposed to this particular agenda item, I would, I would recommend that this not become a habit.
If I may, if I may, Ms. Espinoza, just, just make a comment relative to your comments, and that is, every one of us sitting here tonight, was that a briefing Saturday, I want to say the 23rd or 7th, whatever, it was past Saturday, and these two items were brought up, so at least the board and those, those who were present at the, at the forum were aware of this, and, you know, the, how we would, from where the money would come to pay for these positions, et cetera, et cetera. So just, just as a comment, that, you know, this is not the first time we see it. Any, any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Bruce, go ahead.
Mr. Guidry, do we know possibly how much money is involved with the two we're going to, we're going to hire, basically paying on the 52%?
You're asking for the estimated cost of the position. Depending on their years of experience, it would, the total cost would be in the neighborhood of about $80,000, $85,000, which we'd pay approximately, roughly half of that amount. So 42.5 roughly would be the cost to the sales tax fund. We'll be able to come back, once we have a little history. We're anticipating that at the end of the day, the increased revenue collections as a result of the things that we'll be putting into, into place, because we have the resources to do so, personnel resources, we're anticipating that this, at, when the dust settles, a few months down the road, once the person's trained, that ultimately, the resulting additional sales tax collections will offset the 42.5. There's no guarantee, but we will come back with a report a little further down the road once we have some historical data, and share that with the board.
If there's no other questions, we'll call for a vote on the motion, Melva.
Yes, sir, it's there.
Eight for, none against.
Thank you. Then we will move on to the approval of action items. Item one is a request from a former board member for legal fees. Mr. Brunel?
Yes, sir. I placed this on the agenda, but it was not my agenda item. At the last board meeting, there was a board member request to put this on the, the agenda. It was not moved to, to action at the time, so in accordance, we moved it to action today. So there was an introduction item. I know Mr. Hammond's is here, if you have any questions, so you have that information in front of you, but this was something that was a board member that requested this particular information. So I don't have a lot of answers, but I know Mr. Hammond's could maybe answer your questions in this particular topic.
I have a question. The process of a school board member going out and getting an attorney on his own without board approval, is that, is that common practice? Should, should board approval have been, should he have gotten board approval prior to getting this attorney to represent himself? Did that make sense?
Mr. President, members of board, ordinarily, if it's a criminal matter, the board member gets his or her own attorney, and that's not done through the board. If it's a civil matter, it's usually handled through the board. So in this particular situation, according to the board member in question, he was contacted by the investigative officer who asked to question him about certain improprieties, but did not inform him as to whether he was a witness, possible witness, or whether he was a possible subject of that interrogation. And that's the reason why he retained. And that's the reason why he retained private criminal defense counsel, to defend him or to accompany him to that interrogation. So again, that's just the information that I was provided by the board member. But the answer to your question is, if it's a criminal matter, ordinarily, the board member obtains their own attorney, just as if it's an ethics matter. If you have an ethics charge brought against you, as a board member, you also retain your own attorney. And in the event that you're acquitted of that particular charge, you have the right to come back and ask the board, as a matter of discretion, whether it chooses to refund you any attorney's fees that you have incurred. And that's in essence what this board member has done. He has come to you and asked if, that the board exercise its discretion in favor of refunding to him this particular cost.
Brett, just when I thought I was moving along well, I realized, thanks to Dorothy and Eric, that I kind of, I jumped ahead of the game, so to speak. I think what we need to do is back up just for a second, and ask the members of the board to indicate to us which items from the action agenda they want to pull. And with that, I would recognize Eric.
I'd like to pull the first item. Board members' request for payment of legal fees from action.
All right. We'll pull that one. And the next, the next item is ratification of resignations and retirements of non-tenable employees. Anybody want to pull that one? You want to leave it, leave it, vote on it at the end? All right. Then, item three is approval of administrative contracts. Melva, help me with item four. Is item four, what?
Chief Operations Officer.
Acting Pay. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Chief Operations.
It would be Acting Pay, Chief Operations Officer, that'd be item four.
Yes, sir.
Anybody want to pull that one?
Let me move these correctly, sir. Just one moment.
This is my three-minute pick card here.
All right, sir. It's listed now, four and five. So y'all want to pull number one.
And then the last one would be the new job description for Assistant Sales Tax Director.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. All right, then, the chair would accept a motion, then, to vote on the items that we chose not to pull from the agenda, action items that we chose not to pull.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Brett?
Second.
Chair, okay. Any, any discussion or questions on any of the items from the, from the public? Brett Lachey and Jeremy Hidalgo. Any discussion on any of the items from members of the board? If not, Melva, open the computer for voting. And again, I apologize, Brett and Mr. Hammond, for kind of getting out of step here, but we will go back to the item, and I'll recognize Eric, since he made the motion to pull the item. Eric?
Well, I pulled, all right, I pulled this item, because I just, I just wanted to talk about it. It looks like from the, the opinion you provided, Mr. Hammond, that, and as you mentioned earlier, it's up to our discretion on whether or not we would. I do have a question, just for the record. There is a maximum legal rate that we're allowed to pay? And is that 175?
Actually, as of September, it's 225.
225. What if the charges were incurred prior to September?
Well, the difference is this: When a school board or any public entity hires special counsel, the Attorney General's rate structure kicks in. At that time, the rate structure had a maximum rate of 175. Since that time, the rate's gone to 225, but that's only applicable to special counsel retained by a public entity. When you go to hire a private attorney to represent you in something like a criminal defense matter or an ethics matter, you have the right to pay that attorney a reasonable fee. And the question is whether or not this fee quoted here would be considered to be reasonable. Again, that's part of the discretion to be exercised by the board. The board could vote to approve this fee in total. The board could vote to approve a lesser amount than what has been requested, or the board could vote to, not to approve any of the fee. So the Attorney General rate structure would not actually apply to a bill of this nature, but it is certainly a place to go to look, to see what would be considered to be a reasonable rate.
Mr. Hammond, can you tell us if, if, I understand it's up to our discretion, can you tell if it's been customary in the past, that the board pays the legal bills in situations of this nature?
Well, I can't really speak for this particular board, but I know around the state, if there's a situation in which there's either been an ethics charge brought, or a civil charge brought that's resulted in litigation, in which the board member was acquitted, the fees are customarily reimbursed. That's a little bit of a different situation here. It's a very close call. I cited in my opinion letter, another Attorney General opinion, in which a superintendent was the subject of a grand jury investigation. Board members were summoned to the grand jury, and some of those board members retained their own private attorneys to accompany them to the grand jury. The question was whether they could be reimbursed for their fees to be accompanied to the grand jury, and the Attorney General issued an opinion that they could not. And the basis for his opinion was that they knew when they went to the grand jury, they weren't the subject of the investigation, that they were just going as a witness. And for that reason, there was no necessity for them to obtain counsel, or for the public entity to pay for that counsel. In this particular situation, the information that was provided to our office was that, at the time of this interview, the board member did not know whether he was, in fact, the subject, or was instead only a witness, and that he did not find that out until after that interrogation had begun. And so that's the reason, I think, for which he has made this request. But as far as whether it's customary, it is customary if they've been acquitted, and in this course, in this case, I'm not aware that there were any criminal charges ever brought as a result of this investigation against anyone, to my knowledge.
This motion is going to, this, I'm sorry, Mr. Bruce.
Is there common language that a board member, or any, any member of any board cannot indict the people they're representing for personal reasons? Is that the common layman language?
Well, I think it's, I think you're pretty close, Mr. Bruce Arndt. The question, though, is that if, if a charge is brought against you in your capacity as a school board member, do you have the right to use public funds to defend yourself against that charge? I guess the other way to look at it is, if this particular board member had not been a board member, would he have been put into this situation? And one way to look at it is, if you have to hire a counsel to defend you because of something you did or did not do as a board member, I think it's certainly within the realm of the public fist to reimburse you for the fees that are associated therewith. If this had nothing to do with your position as a school board member, well, then that's a totally different matter, for which there certainly could be no public funds utilized.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the public? This item is going to die, for lack of, for lack of a motion.
I move that we, that we pay the legal bill at the rate of $175 an hour, which was the prevailing rate at the time the charges were incurred.
I'll go ahead and second that. He would have not had this bill if he wasn't a school board member, and it was related to his job. So I'll go ahead and second it. I just wanted to add that comment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments? I'll ask, once again, do we have any comments from the public? Any other comments from the members of the board?
So I just want to clarify, we're approving, the motion is to approve the bill for 5.3 hours times $175 an hour, plus the administrative fee, but my calculations is $945.50. So...
That's correct.
Thank you.
No other comments? Melva, open the computer.
Mr. Angel, I think we're having a technical difficulty. Should I do a roll call vote?
No problem.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
No.
District three?
No.
District four? I'm sorry. District five? District six?
Yes.
District seven?
No.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Abstain.
Four, four, three against.
All right, motion carries.
And one abstain.
This concludes the, the items of business on the agenda. I would, at this point, and again, we don't have our little stopwatch or anything like that, so we'll kind of be liberal in general this evening, but we will accept public comments at this time. You can step up to the podium, and we'll give you three minutes to the best of our ability. Any public comments? Mr. Lejeune, you have any, any comments you want to make in closing?
You want me to do this before, before y'all make a closing? Okay, I can. I just want to remind the board, if you, if you're going to be attending the LSBA Conference in Trifport, please make sure that you see Ms. Dorothy Niese in my office to complete your, your official LPSS travel paperwork. So you need to see Ms. Niese in the office. Just a reminder also, on January 17th, we'll have our second part of the orientation. I thank you for being there for the, for the first orientation. I thought it was very productive, and I thank you for being there. We'll have our, we'll have our second part. It's going to be from, from a little bit earlier, so maybe y'all are going to drink more coffee, from eight to one. We're going to have it on that particular date. And the presentation will include a presentation by Mr. Bob Hammond, or someone representing his firm, from 10 to 12. That was something that many of you had asked, to have Mr. Hammond available to go over particular policies and agenda items and so forth. So Mr. Hammond will be there. I've also submitted the paperwork, or we'll be submitting your paperwork, for asking for permission to use these orientations for earning some of your education credits that are required for you as a board member. So we are taking care of that as well. And third, I'll be getting with Mr. Angel to schedule another workshop. I know it sounds like a lot, but, but as we move into this new budget process, there's just a lot of information. And the one thing that we did not do, and we definitely don't want to give it a backseat, is that to focus on academics and curriculum. So I'll be getting with Mr. Angel to see maybe how we want to do that in the afternoons, and evenings, Saturdays. But we would like to get this done before we begin the budget process, because that, that's what drives our system, is those academics and curriculum pieces. So we want to make sure that we have every ample opportunity to present that information to you, and get your questions. And we'd like to do that before the budget process. And in closing, again, welcome Lafayette Parish Schools. I look forward to working with you. And in closing, just Happy New Year to all of our staff and the entire community. Thank you, Mr. Angel.
Okay, then we'll have closing comments by members from our board, and I would start to my left with Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. Congratulations to all the teachers and principals of the year. It was really exciting to see the list, and especially the looks on their faces on the videos on KATC's website. It was unadulterated joy, from my point of view. So congratulations to all those who won the awards. And also, congratulations to my colleagues. I've been looking forward for, for two months now to getting to work, and I'm, I'm really excited by, by the attitude and the vision and the things that I'm hearing out of everyone at our orientations, and talking to you guys on the phone. So I'm really looking forward to these, these next five years. And then finally, I spent the day today visiting with principals of the schools in my district. And the thing that sticks out to me is that the attitude of everyone involved with the school district is exponentially more positive now that the election is over, and we're, we've got a direction, and we're getting down to work. And I, I want to point out specifically, I credit you, Mr. Lejeune, for that. I think you are a fine leader, and I, if someone out there has something bad to say about him, I haven't found him yet. So, so thank you for your service. I really appreciate it, and good luck to everyone.
First of all, I'd like to thank the voters of District One, who afforded me this opportunity to serve. Second, I would like to thank my family, my husband, Mayor Purvis Morrison, our children, and our family for their love and support. Congratulations to all the board members. I'm looking forward to serving with you. I've visited all the schools in my district, and I'm looking forward to working with the principals and teachers to move our district forward. I think we have a lot of opportunity here. We have a lot of room for growth, and I'm excited to work with all of you, and the community as well. I want to invite the community to support us, and help us in any way you see possible. Whatever you feel that you have to give, we'll take it. So thank you, everybody. Congratulations to the teachers of the years, and all the kids that are doing a great job. We have a lot of great things going on in our school, and we can continue to do well, and move our school system forward to the school district I know that we can be. Thank you.
Probably a lot of what I'll say will echo what the two members have just said. I want to congratulate everyone. I want to congratulate on your president, vice president, look forward to working with everyone. I do want to thank everyone who supported me, the voters of District Five, and the people who are not in District Five. I want to thank my family who are here this evening, especially my beautiful wife, who stood by me for 30 years and told me we were going to win this. I thank you for being there with me. Want to congratulate the teachers and principals who awarded. I want to thank Mr. Lejeune for accepting the interim superintendent's position. I think you're good for this school system, sir, and I appreciate you doing what you've done. I appreciate what the staff did for us Saturday, giving us the orientation, and our assistant superintendent for loaning me cheaters, because I forgot my glasses. I think together, we can have a great five years, if we roll up our sleeves and work together, agree to disagree, but always remember why we're here, to educate the children and to support our system. And in closing, if I could selfishly congratulate my Acadiana Wrecking Rams for going back-to-back state champions. It's been a great 10-year run, and anybody who knows Coach Ted Davidson knows this is well-deserved. The man teaches character, the proper morals and ethics. And I thought of him on election night, because there's something he says, that if you put public service in place of champion, it's fitting. To first become a champion, you must be humble. And that's Ted Davidson and our program at Acadiana, and it's the atmosphere at Acadiana, and it is where I'm from. And in closing, I have never been so humbled in my life as I was on election night. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I can see it's gonna always be hard to follow along behind Brett. I want to thank all of the same people that have already been mentioned by my fellow board members and to thank my board members for electing me as Vice President. I'm very excited and very honored to be serving on this new board, and I know that as a group, we're going to move towards positive change and continue moving this board towards an A school district. Thank you.
Wow. What a great evening. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and, um, here in the boardroom and supporting us and supporting our school system. I too would like to echo Mrs. Centani and most of the board members' comments on thanking all the voters in District Nine. I absolutely know exactly what you guys, ladies and gentlemen, are expecting out of me, and I will deliver. Teachers of the Year, congratulations. All teachers, on behalf of myself and this board, we appreciate what you do and we are here to work for you and, as well, and help you. Mr. Thomas, congratulations to you, sir. Um, I got to know you a little bit from Ernest Scarlett, and, um, you're a great leader. So congratulations, I know you'll do a great job. Fellow board members, thank you all so much for being welcoming to me, um, on this new venture, as it is for most of us. Mr. Lejeune and all the staff, I'm really looking forward to working with you all. I appreciate your, um, just your attitude, your drive and your knowledge, Mr. Lejeune. Thank you very much for accepting this position, and I know you'll do a great job. Last but not least, my lovely wife, children, all of my family and friends, thank you all so much for all the support, and anyone, whether they are in District Nine or any district in Lafayette Parish, always feel free to call upon me for anything you may need. Thank you.
I too want to congratulate the Teachers of the Year and congratulate all the teachers because they all deserve a round of applause because they work so diligently to do a job that's, that's, pays a little at first, but at the end with the accomplishment, it's, the reward is far more than money. I'd like to thank my wife and my family who has gone for the evening. Um, they have worked so hard during the campaign, walking with me, just my granddaughters who were here earlier, and, uh, especially my wife who put, who put up with me for these past several months. My neighbor and my friends who sit there who tells me all the time that I'm gonna visit at home because he doesn't see me. But we had a goal to achieve and with the help of, of the voters in my district, we achieved that goal, and now we moving forward to make our district, District Three, one of the best, if not the best, as we do for the Lafayette Parish Educational System. Think we are a B district, we striving to be an A district, and that's our ultimate goal. Everyone here has the same goal. By speaking to everyone, we, we're all on the same, we're all in the same book, we just need to get on the same page. So thank everyone and congratulations to my board members who was newly elected. We got our foot wet today. Uh, we had a short meeting and I, I guess that the harder ones are yet to come. But if you got the right thing on your mind, directions are clear, we can accomplish all. So, good night.
I'd like to thank my family for supporting me, uh, through this election. Today was, uh, to take the oath and to sit up here as a public servant, it's a very sobering experience. I think, uh, I, I don't think I've ever been more nervous than I was today, uh, to be here. And, and I'd like to recognize briefly my, my predecessor, Dr. Beasley, who served our community for, for many years, and, uh, I've got some, some big shoes to fill. Like to thank the voters of my district, all 8,012 of them who voted for me, and all your support, all the supporters for me. I'd also like to thank those who didn't necessarily support me because I think that you, uh, helped make me a better candidate and also have made me, or will make me, a better board member. So, um, anyway, thank you. I'm very excited to be a part of this board, so thank all of you.
Thank you. And Justin, uh, I, I have a son-in-law who has a D in his name instead of a T, so if I call you Judson, that's why. I'm used to calling him Judson and not Justin. Uh, I also want to wish well that you principal at Karen Crow Heights, uh, as I live about a half a mile from there, uh, I'll, I'll be seeing you in, in the near future. And, and I want to thank my wife and, and family for standing by me for 48 years. Uh, and many, we've, we've gone through many elections together, the first of which was in 1974, before some of you were born. I also want to, I also want to give a little special shout-out. Uh, in, in May of, of last year, my wife lost her father, and her mother and some of the sisters, some of her sisters are at home, uh, watching, watching the program and, and thinking of us and, and Dorothy and the family and, and our deceased member, and I want to give a shout-out to them. So, I hope you guys enjoy the meeting. Uh, I want to echo, I guess, all the comments concerning the, the, um, Teachers, Principals of the Year, et cetera. I personally went to Karen Crow High School today, Karen Crow Middle and, uh, Live Oak Elementary and just expressed my token of appreciation for all, for, for the good work that, that they all do. Uh, with that, uh, I would bid you all good night. I would accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn in the meeting.
Motion in the second to adjourn. You want to, is, is your computer working, Melva?
We need to hurry up so we can really confuse Dr. Chasson when he shows up for a three-hour meeting.
Mary and, uh, who's the second? Mr. Broussard?
Oh, I don't feel as half as bad now. I'll turn it in tomorrow. Oh, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Eight for, none against. Good night.